Hi, welcome everyone to City Council Meeting for Monday, September the ninth. If we could have a roll call please to establish form.
Terry Meyer?
Here.
Alyssa Green?
Here.
Terry McClellan?
I'm here.
Bob Thomas?
Here.
Susan Harmon?
Here.
Vicki Snyder?
Here.
We stand in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and limited to its justice.
If also if y'all would please turn off all your electronic devices as they interfere with our recording equipment, that would be great. And also when we get to the comments, please limit your time to three minutes if you would, please. Get a motion to approve the agenda.
So will.
Second.
The only item that I have right now is we still are waiting on the ordinance for, under new business, item number three, the ordinance for the animal change, so that would be deferred.
Okay. Any timeline on when that's going to happen?
I was working on it again today. It should be finished soon.
Okay, thank you Jim.
All right, anybody else? All right, if there's nothing else, all those in favor of the agenda as amended, say five or saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Get a motion to approve the minutes for August 26th.
So will.
Second.
Any corrections, additions, additions? Hearing done, all those in favor of the minutes as submitted, say five or saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Present.
All right, under our commissions, we have, we need to reconfirm Peggy Duncan on the hospital commission.
I'll make a motion to approve Peggy Duncan's application for position two.
You get a second?
I'll second.
In discussion?
Is she, she's already on the commission?
She's already on it, and she, we appointed her, but she was filling an expired term, and that's the reason it came up so quickly.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all those in favor of Peggy Duncan for position two on the hospital commission, say five or saying aye.
Right.
Any opposed? All right, public comments. Please remember to state your name and address.
It's bad address.
I'm Laura Jo Smalley. I live over at 17 Pivot Rock Road. I'm going to start with last Thursday. I attended what I thought was going to be a meeting of the Mayor's Entertainment District Committee, and after I walked into the odd and saw the mayor and all the council people up on the stage, I learned that it was changed to a council workshop. So just some confusion there. About 10 or 12 people spoke about the entertainment district at the meeting. At least six of them were committee members, or the spouse or partner of a committee member, which left only a few voices of the community who spoke, certainly not a representation of the city public. And the way it worked out, we just kind of spoke at them, and they kind of spoke at us, and there were no exchanges of ideas, there was no real communication, and at the end of the meeting, it was just nothing. At the meeting, one of the owners of a downtown eatery addressed the group and the audience, giving their support to the establishment of the entertainment districts. Council and attendees were informed, he had already been putting customers wine in to-go cups for them to take them with them, and has never had any problems. My question is, if we can't depend on our entertainment establishments to follow the laws as they're written now, why are we going to give even more latitude out? What assurances do we have that those are going to be followed? I wanted to listen to a recording of that meeting, just to be sure I had everything right, but it wasn't posted on YouTube. So I have a question as to why workshops and other meetings aren't published and put out on YouTube?
It never has.
Well, it's still my question. At two of the previous city council meetings, one of the councilmen gave as a reason for passing this ordinance with an emergency clause, was to prevent an already scheduled outdoor event in October involving a city street and alcohol from operating outside of ABC rules. I looked into that, and it turns out that that event has a temporary license, always has had, and that there is no question of their having to have an entertainment district passed so quickly in order for them to have their event. And last, I just, I know this is going to pass, but when we get around to establishing the permanent district, I really want to renew my plea. Let's have a real public hearing with sufficient notice, published in a local paper. Let's distribute what the boundaries are going to be for the permanent district, announce the proposed hours, the days of the weeks, and from what I have learned of the proposed district, it may include the bus station, city hall, the county offices, the odd, several city parks, and my favorite, a length of open drainage ditch that runs beside a major road. And thank you for listening.
My name's Jeff Danos. My address is 839 Pivot Rock Road. I think most of you know me already, mostly probably do my involvement with the Zombie Crawl and other special events. You may not recognize me, because I recently had to shave my beard off so that I could look like Freddie Mercury in a Queen tribute, but anyway, I just, I just wanted to say that I do think that, I think the entertainment district is a great opportunity. I really do. I think that if we, if we could figure out the right times and the right locations, if we have the right enforcement, and I think if, if everyone's informed, I think it could be a great thing. That being said, as the, one of the organizers of one of the largest family-friendly nighttime parades in town, I am opposed to having an entertainment district running during my event. Strictly, the liabilities that that would add to my event is just, it's crippling. It's not something we want to deal with. We've been very careful to avoid having alcohol at our events. We had a brewing company wanted to be in town last year, could have meant a lot of money for us, we turned them away. Our event is family-friendly, and it's been, it's been family-friendly since day one. We want to keep it that way. So I understand tonight is just an enabling ordinance, and, and I'm fine with that, and I just, I guess I want to request that, you know, if that's approved, and you go to move forward with parameters of this entertainment district, please ensure that those of us who are event organizers and planners, that our voice is heard, and, and what would be nice is if there was a way for us to, I guess, request that we don't have an entertainment district operating during certain events, ones where, you know, we just feel like we can't keep the event safe. That's our main concern, so. And I guess the only other thing I have to mention is the food truck thing. Please work on the food truck thing, because Zombie Crawl's coming up, and I got everybody complaining that, you know, last year they ran out of food in the restaurants, and everybody wants quick, on-the-go food, and that seems to be one of the options that we could have. So if you could do whatever you can to help us out there, we're kind of running out of time, so thank you very much for your time.
My name is, can you hear me? Is it fine? My name is Trevor Lafflin, and I live on Mill Hollow. I own a property there. I first came to Eureka Springs in the 70s, when Barbara Scott owned the New Orleans Hotel. I was the maid for a while, a very unsuccessful maid, so I went back to teaching. Anyway, I'm here tonight to ask our distinguished representatives and our distinguished public to support my wish that Cheryl Maples, who passed away a couple of weeks ago, a distinguished lawyer in Arkansas, who fought for and got the rights for lesbian and gay men. I don't know about you, but I will be 83 years old in February. Everybody says, you don't look like that. I don't know what that means. I will be 83, and I've always been a gay woman, a proud gay woman. And nobody ever publicly stood up for me in my whole life. Cheryl Maples stood up for the rights of gay men and lesbians. And she stood up for poor people. She was an attorney that never charged anybody if they couldn't pay. Have you ever heard of that? She was my friend, too. She loved Eureka Springs. She came here many times, she was in our home many times, and I would like to put up a plaque in Basin Park, a beautiful one done by some woman artist that looks like her and says what her work was, to honor her and to honor the gay community all over Arkansas for everything she did for us. I'd like for you to think about it. I will be responsible for raising the money. I will run everything by you. All you have to do is love us. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Yeah, well spoken, and I concur with her, that was very nice. Damon Henke here, from the Eureka Springs Chamber of Commerce. I want to, first of all, throw out a quick reminder, we've got Morning Brew tomorrow at 8:30 a.m. up at the community center. We will be going over business communications and how to hone your communication skills, so all businesses welcome, you don't just have to be a chamber member. It's a cooperative with the Main Street Program, and we will have that, it's the door right next to the greenhouse there at the community center. Again, 8:30, all welcome. I have an excellent speaker to train our local businesses on business communication. Moving on to the next topic, I wanted to thank you for holding that workshop on the entertainment district. Obviously, there was a lot of committee members there, but there was a lot of public there, too. One thing I always like to note about Eureka Springs is most people who are opposed to something don't miss an opportunity to voice their opinion, and we had sent out 1,300 emails from the chamber there on our local list that goes far beyond just chamber membership to try and notify everybody of that workshop. So I think we had a good, a good cross-section of people who were actually concerned about the topic there, and obviously 100 percent support at that particular event. So that being said, I appreciate that, and I agree that I don't have any problem having another workshop on that, if we can move this forward. And to just comment on something that Jeff Danos said, I think the committee would be eager to work on something that's kind of the reverse of what we're seeing out there, to say, there might be certain dates that an entertainment district isn't applicable to Eureka Springs for safety reasons, or just, we got so many people, that I think everybody's sensitive, that we don't want to turn this into a giant drunk festival in the middle of downtown, so if there was appropriate dates, that we shut it off. And in the actual ordinance that the committee's been writing, the police chief or fire marshal can pull the entertainment district at any time that he sees fit for safety reasons, so there's certainly some availability in there to control some of that. But glad that you're voting on the enabling ordinance tonight, looking forward to it, and I hope that that all goes well. Thank you.
That concludes our public comments, which brings us up to our unfinished business, ordinance number 2282, parking meter rates on special events, the third and final reading.
I make a motion that we read ordinance number 2282, parking meter rate for special events, on its third reading by title only. Second.
Discussion? Got a hearing done, is that voice, or?
It's roll call. Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
No.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. McClellan?
Yeah.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Page one. Ordinance number 2282, and ordinance amending chapter 8.48 of the municipal code pertaining to parking rates for the city of Eureka Springs.
Get a motion for approval of ordinance 2282?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2282, parking meter rates for special occasions, special events.
All right, discussion?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
No.
Uh, Green?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Page one.
Okay, that brings us up to our ordinance number 2283, entertainment district, on its third reading. Get a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Second?
Second.
All right, comments? Ms. Meyer?
I looked through the minutes of the 12th, when we voted on this twice, and I did not see where we had approved these changes that were made. They aren't big changes, but they're highlighted here, city approved, city approved, and then there's a little change back here. And also, there's some duplication. There's a sentence that's duplicated twice. There's a space here that, a sentence, section eight, well.
Which page are you on?
In section six, or seven, I'm sorry, under 6B. There's 6B, it's been changed to, there were two Bs, and the one's changed to C, but it's, it's the same. It's repetitive. And then in section eight, if you notice, if you read A, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that again, sir?
If you read A under section eight, it doesn't make a lot of sense, that whole sentence is, there's something wrong. Something happened in the copy and paste. And then in 6F, we've got a blank field. Can we pass an ordinance with a blank field? There's no amount.
The fine total.
Mr. Thomas?
All of the gray shadow items are amendments that the committee is going to suggest tonight, and also we're going to suggest that you fill in that blank tonight with a motion to amend this ordinance.
Okay, I'm not sure how that works. So we've passed this, we voted on this twice, and we're going to amend it tonight.
Correct.
Which means it will take a unanimous vote to pass it tonight. We can't amend, I called the municipal league, we can't amend something after it's passed twice.
Now, we'll amend it, we'll make the motions, as you noted, and that will be the amendment. We'll vote on the amendment, and we'll vote on the ordinance.
But if, when we vote on the ordinance, it will have to be a unanimous vote in order to make it to pass the third reading.
That would be true in any case, yes, sir.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
What if amendments were made first?
The amendments are made first.
Yeah, they have to be made.
I think, I think you better clarify that again, Mr. Meyer.
Clarify that unanimous vote?
Is it, he's talking to take some unanimous, or just a majority?
No, it has to be a unanimous vote. No way.
Did they give you authority for that?
I was one of the lawyers at the municipal league. State law does not dictate that, that I'm aware of. State law only dictates a one vote required to pass an ordinance. We've been using a three-vote system, but it's not even required. But we're doing an amendment on the third reading, and that's the difference. If the amendment was done at the beginning, before the first reading, that would be something else, but an amendment on the third meeting, reading, we're amending something that we've already passed twice. No, you have not, you have not passed it until the third reading. You passed it for. Well, we've read, we've read twice.
We're amending the second reading at this point. We haven't voted on the third reading. But I'm, I'm going back with Mr. Weaver. I'm confused on the unanimous, I mean, as opposed to the majority. I've never heard that before.
No, that's what I was told in the final today.
Do you remember which attorney you talked to? Did he cite any, state law? Did he cite any state law?
No, I didn't ask. Let's see if I can find his name.
My understanding is by a simple majority. And even, we get to other cases where it requires a supermajority, it's still four out of six is the supermajority. As far as I know, there isn't anything in state law that says it's got to be 100 percent unanimous.
I've got his name at home, I don't have a.
Any other comments? Mr. Thomas?
I just want to make sure the process, if I move to pass this ordinance, then I can, there'll be discussion, and then I can offer the amendment, after the motion is made to pass it? Or should I make a motion now to amend, add the amendment?
We should first make the motion to read it, and then discuss, and then you can make your motion to amend.
Okay.
Okay.
Then I move to suspend the rules and read ordinance 2283 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
No.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Page two. Ordinance number 2283, an ordinance to authorize the creation of permanent and temporary entertainment districts, establishing standards for their creation, and declaring an emergency to exist.
Mr. Thomas?
I'd like to offer a motion to amend ordinance 2223 as follows, and do I get a second now, or do I go through all the?
We've got to know what it is first.
I think you need to go through what it is.
Okay, I'll go through what it is first. These were mostly amendments that were suggested by the committee in response to concerns of Ms. Harmon's at the first meeting. So if you look at page two, section four, under A, we're basically changing open alcoholic beverage container to city-approved open alcoholic beverage container. Also in section four B, we're again adding city-approved to open alcoholic beverage container. And section four C, city-approved open alcoholic beverage container, and there's two of those in C. And then in, at the last sentence of C, that was an error on my part when I wrote the first draft, the word was supposed to be or, and I had got it put in as and. We're amending that to or. On page three, under section five E3, we're adding the word city-approved to open alcoholic beverage container. And number five, where it says district-approved containers, we're saying city-approved containers. On page four, item F, in the blank space, we're going to put in $500 plus costs upon the recommendation of the city attorney. Under F1, it says, no person shall possess or consume from and, and that should be from any, any open alcoholic beverage container. Number F3, again, you've got the word district, which we're changing to city-approved container. And then on page five, yeah, we're eliminating, we were going to change the B to C, but now I see the duplication, so I guess we're just going to change B to C and have a duplicate sentence there.
Just remove.
Just omit that.
Do you want to omit that?
Exit.
I'm representing the committee, so I'm, okay, we'll just remove item C. And those are the amendments I'm proposing and motion to amend.
Second. Discussion?
What about A in section eight? You read that sentence, it's impossible to understand.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Thomas?
I have the explanation for what that says. Basically, it says the mayor gets the application for a temporary permit, but he cannot approve it until it's been approved by the Public Works Department and the Eureka Springs Department first.
Police?
Public Works, please.
How about if we put a period after district and change but into however, no event shall recommend, in no event shall the mayor recommend a grant or deny, recommend, grant, or denial of an application prior to its approval by Public Works?
I'm not understanding what you're saying. Could you read what you're saying, the whole thing, please?
The mayor's office shall act promptly upon a timely filed application for the creation of a temporary entertainment district, period.
In no event.
Go ahead.
Take the but out. In no event shall the mayor recommend a grant or denial of an application prior to its approval by Public Works.
And?
Eureka Springs Police Department.
Thank you.
Does that make better sense? It just didn't make much sense.
Comments?
My comment would be that this was copied from the Little Rock ordinance, and I don't feel comfortable changing legalese without the city attorney agreeing that yours would be just as appropriate.
Ms. Weaver?
I see no real technical difficulty in doing it either way, so if council wants to make the amendment, I see no, no problem with doing that.
So that's amendment number two?
I think we'd probably, Mr. Meyer, if you don't mind, let's stick with, with the amendments that Mr. Thomas has suggested, and then we'll come back to your amendment.
Can't do that. If he makes an amendment to it, you've got to do that one first.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do two, and then one.
So, so Mr., if you want to make an amendment, this would be the second amendment, Mr. Meyer.
Right.
With a second to what you're wanting to do. Is that your, your proposal for amending this amendment?
Yeah, that's my proposal, is to amend the amendment.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Yes.
Okay. Any other comments, Mr. McClellan?
Well, just to say is that but is just a, what is, the conjugating word, or whatever it is, I mean, it, it just makes it, it says the same thing, with or without the word, it just takes, you know, the word but out, and I don't know who that's referring to, but, but, maybe me, but, but anyway, it's, 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 either way, it says the same thing, whether you have the period or leave the but in.
I think, I think leaving the title out, you know, in no event shall the mayor recommend a, a grant. Or denial of an application prior to its approval.
Any further comments on, on this amendment? All right, hearing done. All those in favor of the second amendment? All those in favor of the second amendment, section eight, A, Mr. Meyer suggested, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so, now. Motion for approval of the amendment as read by Mr. Thomas and highlighted in our papers. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So both amendments are, are approved. That brings us up to approval of the ordinance. We had, we need now a motion to approve the ordinance on its third reading.
Yes, sir.
Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2283 on its third and final reading.
By title only?
We've already read it.
Sorry.
Second.
Motion, second discussion? Yes, ma'am.
If we pass this, do we have to still pass emergency clause? Yes.
Yes. Okay, any further discussion?
Eddie?
Yep, hearing done.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Ms. Snyder?
No.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
4-2.
All right. Anybody interested, Mr. Thomas?
I'm not sure of what I'm supposed to say, but I move to invoke the emergency clause.
Okay, do I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and second discussion, Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, part of the discussion, I'd like to clarify something that was said during public comments, which was that October, a city council person was quoted as having said that Oktoberfest was illegal under ABC rules, that, I've never said that, maybe another council person said that. I'm told by the police chief and by the city attorney that Oktoberfest is illegal because city code says there is no drinking on a city street. And that's why if we do the emergency clause, then the people who run Oktoberfest can come in and get a temporary permit, and it can proceed completely legal.
Ms. Green, did you have a comment?
No, I, I don't anymore.
Okay, any further questions, Mr. Meyer?
Bob, you've always talked about emergencies. We don't have a flood, we don't have a natural disaster, we don't have a water leak that we have to appropriate funds for, but there's nothing except maybe accommodating a little get-together that's been happening for 20-some years on, on Center Street. I don't understand why we're trying to invoke the emergency clause here. It's, it seems totally inappropriate.
I agree.
Mr. Thomas?
For me, it goes back to several occasions when we discovered something we were doing was not legal, or that something we should have done to make something legal. At this point, all of us sitting here, if Oktoberfest goes on without a permit, all of us sitting here will know it's not a legal activity. We're not enforcing our ordinance. And if you start being selective about which ordinances you enforce, then next week, when my cousin does something, I'm going to come in here and say, "Well, I don't think we should enforce that," that's my cousin, "we'll enforce it next time on somebody that I'm not related to." You can't pick and choose when you're going to enforce your ordinances. You either enforce them, or you don't enforce them, once you find out that you've got a problem, and we have a problem, that I was totally unaware of until we started meeting with the police chief. Oh, I guess we won't have a...
Ms. Green?
When is Oktoberfest? What's the dates?
The 23rd, it's right here.
Okay.
Oh, the 19th of October.
So if we didn't evoke the emergency clause today, it would still be passed in time, no, not to do...
Thirty days.
Yeah. It'd be passed, but would they, would they be able to apply and get a, a temporary permit if we did not evoke that? No, okay, okay, I've, I've, I've got my, okay, I've got my question answered. Thank you, Kim.
Mr. McClung?
Emergency is, is, is the term used, but it's, it's only used in, in relationship to this ordinance and, and its particular needs. It's not, it's not, emergency doesn't necessarily mean life or death situations, or catastrophic events, or anything of that nature. It's, emergency is just in relationship to what this ordinance represents and for its purpose. That's all. It's, it's not, you know, just don't make something out of something that's not really there.
Mr. Meyer?
Well, it's a, this is kind of a big deal, and it's, I see no reason for the big hurry. This is a big deal. This isn't just an ordinance about jaywalking. This, this is, this is something, especially the next step that is being ready to be brought forth before the commi, before the council, is, is a pretty big deal, and, and things are just being pushed too quickly. I don't, I don't see it, but I'm probably a minority.
Okay, Ms. Snyder?
Well, 30 days from now makes it October 9th, so the festival's...
They have to apply 30 days before.
Oh, I forgot about that part, okay.
And further comments? Ms. Green?
For me, and, and I, my question was answered, this is just an ordinance that enables us, and it, it will enable the Oktoberfest people to apply and probably get one, and I agree with some of our public speakers. I think after that, I think it is going to be a really, the next ordinance will be a very thoughtful, long process before we make any decisions. This is just one that enables us to have a district. And we, we don't have to have it, but it enables us to.
Mr. Meyer?
Has anybody talked with the Oktoberfest people to find out if they're even interested? Has anybody talked to them? What if they don't want to have to go to the expense and everything else that they'd have to go through, the additional? Has anybody talked to them about it? We could be rushing this through for absolutely no reason.
Ms. Green?
Mickey, they've already been having alcohol out there, we're trying to make them legal. I, I think they're definitely going to want to go for it. Making it legal means they've got to get the cups, the wristbands, the signage, the...
All the questions.
Security, all of that stuff, so has anybody talked to them? Nobody's answered my question.
Nobody from this group. That's okay.
Well, then we shouldn't be doing an emergency.
The question's been called, I guess, I have a second. Okay.
There was no second?
No. Any further comments? Ms. Snyder?
I'm just saying, and I don't see why we should be making an emergency of this when nobody knows if they are willing or interested in going to the extra expense that they're going to have to go through.
Any other comments? All right, hearing done. Roll call vote.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Nope.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Section 15, emergency clause, that due to the need to possibly take advantage of the current tourist season and thereby help develop improved rules and regulations for future full seasons, and for the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of the city, that those projects help assure, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage by the Eureka Springs City Council and signing by the Eureka Springs Mayor.
Thank you. That brings us up to our next ordinance under new business, discussion of removing the requirement for insurance from the tram tours. Ms. Snyder and Mr. Thomas, get a motion to discuss?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Thomas and Ms. Snyder, you want to lead off? Ms. Snyder?
Um, I left my other paper at home, of course. What they are asking is since this, would they, we needed to ask the city attorney.
Go ahead.
Is it better to remove that line about the insurance, since that's never been requested, to just plan to remove it, or is it to specify the owner? If, if, I don't know how to word this, or is it better to specify that the owner has to make sure there's insurance? Right now, they're using city trams, which are automatically insured. So what he wants to know is, should we just remove that whole line that talks about the insurance that has nothing to do with it, or specify that it must be owner-insured? That's what he wants to know.
Well, my understanding of, of what's been put forth is that he has difficulty in finding owner insurance, that there is no open policy out there that is available at a reasonable rate. And if we're not going to require it, it should be removed in whole from the ordinance. There's no point in putting in there a requirement that he have it if he cannot get it, or if we are not going to require him to get it, and apparently in the past couple of terms that we've allowed them to operate, we've not required them to produce it. So it simply should be removed to prevent anyone who might sue from saying there's a requirement that's not being met, and using that as proof that something improper is being done.
Okay, then I make a motion that we change...
I think also, I think, and I have to go back to the ordinance, I think it says "state required," and it's not required by the state.
That's correct.
Okay, so I make a motion that we amend that, the tram tour ordinance to delete that one section. I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. McClung?
Have we received a copy of that?
We did.
We did?
Yes, of course, mine's at home.
Yeah, I didn't bring it either, it's in my truck. Is it? And the state does not require, is that what you're saying?
That is correct. According to Smitty, the state does not require, does not have that as a requirement.
And I just assume what it's liability, insurance?
The city owns, it's all covered.
The, the statement says, "A certificate of insurance that the applicant has applicable insurance in the amount as is required by the state." The state doesn't require any, that's the problem. Let me repeat that. A certi, this is a statement under the franchise ordinance, "A statement of insurance that the applicant has applicable insurance in the amount as is required by the state."
So the city doesn't have any insurance on them either?
The city has insurance, but what the statement says is as required by the state. The state has no requirement for any insurance. So this item here is really null and void because the state doesn't require it. Any other comments?
I wish I'd...
Mr. Thomas?
Well, I don't have the whole ordinance, but I thought the ordinance was speaking to not tram tours, but some other kind of tours, and we had have been applying that ordinance to the tram tours.
I'm not sure what that says at the top, but I think you're right.
Right, and so...
Group tour, franchise application.
Group tours, so it's group tours.
Group tours.
So group tours, the state of Alaska requires some insur, I'm state of Alaska, I'm sorry, I'm Alaskan. The state of Arkansas does require some insurance for group tours, but they do not have any requirements for tram tours. So if you take this out, then at some point you may have a group tour, and you've taken out their requirement to have insurance. I think leave it in there because he's been meeting the state's requirements all along, which is no insurance.
That's true.
Makes sense.
Mr. Garrison, did you follow that?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Garrison is representing Mr. Gunnels. Please, sir. I know your voice carries a little bit, but still.
That's what they tell me, I'm Tim Garrison. I work for Joe Gunnels Tours, and if you'll allow me, I have a very vested interest in everything that goes on with the tours. Joe has assured me that if there is a requirement, and I don't believe there is a difference between our tram tours and group tours, because if they're going to take a tram tour, they're going to be under the same umbrella that everybody else is. Joe assures me if we need to do it, but if there's no guidelines, and the state is famous for this, if there's no guidelines, how do we get insurance on something we don't even know exists? And that is Joe's bottom line on that, but I assure you, he'll work with you any way that the council deems necessary. I will help him, because I want to go on giving tours. It's a great joy of my life, and he says he'll work with you however you need to do. That I'm authorized to say.
Just to clarify, I was on your side, and you're talking like, I think we misunderstood you.
Probably so, I don't hear good anyway.
Yeah, I was saying the exact same thing that you did, which is they don't require any insurance for tram tours.
That's it, and, and I will, I have to, yes, I'm sorry, Terry.
No, this is, well, I want to direct this at the mayor, and I just want to make a motion that, that we, that we, that we take no action.
I think there's already a motion in there.
Yes, sir.
Huh?
There's already a motion.
To what?
To remove it, that's what the city attorney...
Oh, well, I mean, okay, you can vote on that first, whatever you want to do, but...
Well, that's why I asked the city attorney what would be better.
Any further comments? All right, let's have, because the...
Mr. Mayor, may I be excused?
Well, not yet.
Or do you need me?
No, you can sit and answer.
Thank you. That was kind of you.
Motion to remove the statement, what, what's the number of that? Item F from section 420.06, from the ordinance. But a motion is second. All those in favor of removing that, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
One and five?
Okay. All right. Is there any other motion? Ms. Snyder?
Can we ask the city attorney what's better, to leave it when there is no such thing, or to remove it so there's no confusion?
Well, I think I expressed my opinion that removing it would be better, but the council has taken a vote now, and...
But did the council understand that?
Well, it appears to be the will of the council. I'm not here to impose my thoughts on you. That's the representatives of the people, that's the six of you, not me.
I think as long as the council realizes that when Mr. Gunnels presents his application for a franchise, that he will not be giving a certificate of insurance because there is none required by the state.
That's correct.
Then why did it come up this time after all these years?
Because Mr. Gunnels asked for it.
Somebody brought it up.
At this point, when he does his application, he should probably make a sentence in the application that he has complied with the requirement by not having insurance, to his best of his belief, not to be giving advice to Mr. Gunnels. Not to be giving advice to Mr. Gunnels, but-
Me either nor to the, to the council. Uh, he will do whatever is necessary under the law, uh, and under the council's direction. He has told me that personally, and I would never lie to you, all right? If there's anything more you need to know, just holler, and Joe will help you. He's at, he's in Mexico right now, or I wouldn't be here anyhow.
All right, thank you. I think that-
Is he taking a tour?
Pardon me?
Is he taking a tour down there?
No, no, no. He won't even come to town and do one because he knows I'm better than he is.
He drove a tram down there.
Hey, that's no brag, that's just fact, folks. I'm humble, too.
Before we go on, Dave, are you getting any interference with your microphone? Anything, any interference on your recordings? Okay, just want to make sure. Uh, all right, that brings us up to, uh, let's see, our next item is, uh, resolution to, and I don't see Parks, uh, ordinance to waive bidding for shuttle from Parks.
I make a motion that we-
I agree.
Make, have a discussion on the bidding. It has been explained to me, I don't know if that matters. Oh, there he is.
He is out somewhere.
He was waiting. I didn't see him either.
Okay, did I get a, did I hear, I heard a motion, did I get a second?
To discuss the shuttle, the shuttle thingy for parking.
Did I get a second?
What was the motion? I'm sorry.
For a discussion to waive the bidding for the shuttle from Parks, I have two A.
You got one, thanks.
Sorry.
Okay. Mr. Fisher? Yes, sir. Mr. McLeod?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, what's it, what's it for that, that, uh, that, that it's, uh, um, maybe this tells me, or maybe it doesn't. Is this just a shuttle for, for Leatherwood for the bicycles or something, or what?
Yes and no. Uh, it is, it will primarily be a second shuttle for bicycles out at Lake Leatherwood. Once we reach about forty riders, which we generally do every weekend, uh, we start having a service loss of value for the riders. It's taking longer for them to get around, uh, and go up there, so this is, uh, but this second shuttle we're purchasing, that is planned, we can use these for programming, other tours, other uses as well, and so with that in, the second one is why we went for an ADA with a hint, with a wheelchair lift on a second, which complicated finding it.
I, I, I mean, I really, I, you kind of lose me on these other tours and things like you're talking about.
The primary purpose of these two shuttles is to run the downhill shuttles at Leatherwood, yes. When we can use them and make other funds with them, we will, or when they complement other programming and we don't have to use shuttle or hit up Smitty and transit, we'll be able to handle some of those as well. But the primary function, the reason we have to have these and have had to have these is for the bicycle trails.
Okay, that's, that's, I just wanted to know what the purpose was.
Sure. Yes, sir.
If I hike down the hill, will you give me a ride back up?
Most days. Be nice to the drivers most days. Yes, ma'am.
I just have a question. It seems like we waive bidding a lot, and I guess my question is, if you have one person bid, or you have three people bid, in the end, if you, if you truly only have one person who's going to bid, why are we waiving? Because isn't that one bid sufficient because you did bidding?
If we were looking for a specific new vehicle that was, that three vendors could provide us the same vehicle for, that would be one thing. We're looking for a used vehicle that has mileage that is appropriate for us, that its standards were appropriate for us, um, and then when you throw on the, uh, handicap accessible aspect, it takes your pool down by about ninety-five percent.
But isn't that what you put in your bid? I mean, isn't that what you put in your information for someone to bid on? Is those requirements and those parameters?
It is.
And if they don't meet them, they don't meet them, so they don't qualify, right?
Right, and then we don't-
Let me, if you read the ordinance, uh, under, uh, I guess two A, it, they're wanting by used ordinance, uh, from a local person. I don't know if that-
I understand what, I understand that part of it. I guess my, my, my hangup is that we're waiving bidding. If the bids are not sufficient, do not meet your needs, they're disqualified. So I don't understand why we have to go through this process if our requirement is that we do competitive bidding. If the bid that comes in is not what you're looking for, then it's null and void anyway. And it sounds like you may have somebody out there that has something, they obviously are going to bid, and wouldn't that be your winning bid, or wouldn't that be?
Not necessarily. The thing I found with the ADA ones especially, with the wheelchair lift, for instance, at last month's commission meeting on Tuesday night, I told them I didn't have a vehicle I was comfortable recommending for purchase. On Wednesday night, one came up. Thursday morning, I called him, put down a deposit, a refundable deposit on it, and he had two more offers that day. That, that, well, if you look at that, that's cost me $3,000 a month by waiting for that thirty-day bid process to come out and send it out again to another thirty-day bid process. What I can assure you is that we've done extensive research on this throughout shuttles throughout the country, literally, to try and find the prices, the price points we want on this. With the shuttle bug, we have a known quantity that we're getting well below market value as an acknowledgement of payments we've made to them through our agreement. Uh, with the ADA shuttle, I have a specific shuttle that was a retirement home shuttle that was maintained by the leasing agent that will guarantee a DOT passenger, uh, inspection, that it will pass when we get it, and also has, with the handicap seats, you lose two seats in the back of your shuttle unless you have fold-down seats, which creates a logistical challenge when you're loading fourteen and twelve, and fourteen and twelve, or twelve and twelve, fourteen. Uh, this one already has those seats down, we won't have to add those afterwards as well. Uh, and again, this is, this is trying to find, when you're buying a used vehicle, to get those bids on comparable vehicles are, are not possible, to my opinion.
So no, it doesn't, I guess maybe it doesn't really have anything to do with your situation. It's just that we're waiving bidding. And I guess my concern is, because I've seen this over and over and over again, that we're waiving bidding, not just on your projects here, that we do that as a city, that at some point, could someone not come back and say, um, you know, you haven't, you haven't allowed fair bidding for five years, because everything that has come through, we've waived bidding on. And so, so I guess I'm just looking at it from that side, and it doesn't have anything against you.
I can't speak to any of that, obviously.
It doesn't have anything to do against parks. I understand your situation. I'm just, my question was, you know, that we're waiving bidding again.
That's not an uncommon thing to do in city governments. We've done this for twenty years.
And I understand that.
And we've never had, you know, this, when they're itemizing a specific item, then that's what you do, is waive bids, and it's common in other city governments, not just us. Ms. Snyder?
It's, it's basically what this comes down to is a time constraint. We can either get this vehicle at a really decent price now, or we can wait the thirty days and blow it, and probably pay three to ten times more.
Or not be able to find a vehicle would be my comment on that, to that same thing. That, that's the biggest thing, is finding a specific-
So it's like the emergency clause you all just passed.
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I just would like to refresh my memory. When we did the fire truck, there was one that was a demo that we authorized.
Right.
But did we do an emergency call on that?
I think we did.
Did we?
Yeah.
And could you go over this with me? Because this is kind of like your quarterly reports that are so hard to understand.
I tried to put so little on here, Bob. Um, what we have, the left column is our monthly average of what shuttle expenses have been costing us.
Correct.
Okay, so shuttle bug, we have a lease agreement for that vehicle. The consigned are our secondary vendors we've been using for that second shuttle, uh, and that, and that's totals on this side. The right column, if we had already purchased these two shuttles and were paying out what we would have had to pay out with, that's where we come up with the, uh, number that is $3,329.45 less than what we're currently paying.
But, but the, the, this doesn't, uh, this is not your two shuttles?
Yes, no, that's two shuttles.
The eleven fifty of what payment?
Yeah.
For how many years?
Uh, that is for a four-year notice.
We can't go over five.
Can't go five, we're at five, yeah. We've had, and we've, we've sent out for the financing from the local banks, we've settled in a three-point-two percent on that, uh, which is a fair rate for a used vehicle, certainly.
So will you be excluding independent contractors when you have two shuttles?
We will not be excluding them, but we will be licensing and requiring them to pay a fee to operate in the park. Yeah. And they will operate, but they won't run the same, we're actually expanding our turnaround, so there'll be an individual side. So that's part of what we want to do, is bring them out, you know, business.
I have to assume that you did do diligence with the pricing on the shuttle bug, but the great advantage to it is that you've had two or three months to try it out, which you're not going to get with any other vehicle.
And we also, to their credit, uh, as we were looking at it and we started talking about this, we decided, we felt that the tires were in need, and they've just replaced all the tires on the shuttle bug too prior to sale as well, so, um, which is, again, I think, a, an excellent price. And I think, I believe firmly that that shuttle on the open market would be thirty-three, thirty-four thousand dollars.
Mr. McLeod?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, assign, uh, this ordinance a number and read it for its first reading.
Get second?
Second.
And further discussion? All in favor, see if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
An ordinance to waive bidding for purchasing ADA shuttle. Uh, let's go to the second line. An ordinance to waive competitive bidding to purchase one ADA compliant shuttle vehicle for the Eureka Springs Parks Department and declaring an emergency. Whereas the Parks Department of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas is currently in need of one new ADA compliant shuttle for use in the park system, and whereas the-
Listen, Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but aren't we doing the shuttle bug right now?
That's the second one.
Oh, okay, well, that was, I, I, Mr. McClung, what was your motion? I'm sorry, I'm confused.
That we assign this a, a number and-
Which one were you talking about?
A.
The I S D.
It's the same process.
Yeah, it's same process.
It's, uh, well, I had two As, what I've got marked, but-
Okay, the ADA one?
Yeah.
All right, we hadn't discussed that, so, okay.
I didn't realize that we had multiples. Pardon me.
Excuse me also.
Okay, ready?
Nice.
Get it. Whereas the Parks Commission has researched the cost and availability of acquiring an affordable used ADA compliant shuttle, located the only such shuttle now located in Midwest, at Midwest Shuttle in Indianapolis, Indiana, and whereas it is the recommendation of the Parks Commission that the shuttle be purchased from Midwest Shuttle of Indianapolis, Indiana, due to the uniqueness and rarity of such vehicles available at a reasonable cost in used condition. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section one, the requirements for competitive bidding in the acquisition of the used shuttle unit is and shall be waived to allow the purchase of the unit from Midwest Shuttle of Indianapolis, Indiana, so as to provide the Parks Department with an ADA compliant unit for use in the park system that cannot be reasonably obtained elsewhere. Section two, the quote for Midwest Shuttle in the amount of $35,000 shall hereby be accepted to allow for a timely purchase without unnecessary delay that could result in loss of availability and thereby loss of revenue for the Parks Department. Section three, all ordinances and resolutions in Parks thereof in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. In the event any one or more of the provisions contained in this ordinance shall for any reason be held by a court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid, illegal, or unenforceable in any respect. Such invalidity, illegality, or unenforceability shall not affect the remaining provisions of this ordinance, and this ordinance shall be construed as if invalid, illegal, or such unenforceable provision or provisions had never been contained herein.
Mr. McLeod?
Uh, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we pass ordinance twenty-two-eight-four in its first reading.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, see if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. McLeod?
I'd like to make a motion that we read ordinance number tw- suspend the rules and read ordinance number twenty-two-eight-four by title only for its second reading.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. McLeod?
Yep.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Six-zero. An ordinance to waive, ordinance number two-two-eight-four, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding to purchase one ADA compliant shuttle vehicle for the Eureka Springs Parks Department and declaring an emergency.
Mr. McLeod?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass ordinance number twenty-two-eight-four in its second rea-
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none?
Voice is okay.
All those in favor, see if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Mr. McLeod?
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number twenty-two-eight-four. Uh, uh, read it by title only, suspend the rules and do so.
First, third reading. Second.
Motion second. Discussion?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
You said yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ordinance number two-two-eight-four, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding to purchase one ADA compliant shuttle vehicle for the Park, for Eureka Springs Parks Department and declaring an emergency.
Mr. McLeod?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty-two-eight-four in its third and final reading.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none?
No.
All in favor, see if I'm, oh, wait a minute. Voice vote.
Roll call. It's okay, we'll get it.
Oh, yeah, roll call.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yep.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Six-zero.
Mr. McLeod?
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, uh, invoke the emergency clause.
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question for-
Mr. Thomas?
Um, if you, if you pay eleven fifty for forty-eight months, that comes out to like fifty-five thousand dollars, and your purchase price is sixty-three thousand.
Maybe a three-year note. Apologize, I'm late.
I mean, are you making down payments? I guess that's my question.
No, that is a straight finance. It'd be a three-year note.
What is your interest rate? Just curious.
Three-point-two-four, I believe.
That's a good rate.
Yeah, and we bid, did bid the financing out.
That's, that's a good rate.
Yeah.
What'd you find out on your, in answer to Mr. Thomas's?
Take me a moment. Such a great signal in here.
What is apple pie?
Should I withdraw?
3224% is a five-year note. It's $633 with the total cost of the car loan, $37,959.
Okay, it's a five-year note?
Yeah.
Not, you said four-year.
I just apologize for that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, motion been made in second for to read the emergency clause.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yep.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Would you please read it?
Okay, emergency clause, section four. The City Council upon the recommendation of the Parks Commission and the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, finds that because of the lack of an ADA compliant unit in use now and the scarcity of used units meeting the needs of the city, that could result in loss of revenue. It is in the best interest and for the health, safety, health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of Eureka Springs to purchase this one tram power unit for the city, that an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and therefore this ordinance shall go into full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to assign a number and read the ordinance for its first reading for the bidding for the, to waive the bidding for the purchase of the shutter, shuttle bug.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, sing if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number will be 2285. An ordinance to waive competitive bidding to purchase one vehicle for the Eureka Springs Parks Department and declaring an emergency. Whereas the Parks Department of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, is currently using a vehicle commonly referred to as the shuttle bug for a shuttle. And whereas the Parks Commission has researched the cost and availability of acquiring a similar unit, and determined that the currently leased unit can be more affordably purchased. And whereas it is the recommendation of the Parks Commission that the Commission purchase with its current funding the vehicle currently in use and which can be purchased from Jim Nelson. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section one, the requirements for competitive bidding and the acquisition of a shuttle vehicle is and shall hereby be waived to allow the purchase of the unit from Jim Nelson so as to provide the Parks Department with equipment that the department employees are familiar with and have knowledge of the maintenance history. Section two, the quote from Jim Nelson in the amount of $28,958 shall hereby be accepted to allow for a timely purchase without unnecessary delay that could result in loss of use to the City Parks Department, a unit with a known history. Section three, all ordinances and resolutions and parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. In the event, any one or more of the provisions contained in this ordinance shall for any reason be held by a court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid, illegal, or unenforceable in any respect. Such invalidity, illegality, or unenforceability shall not affect the remaining provisions of this ordinance, and this ordinance shall be construed as if such invalid, illegal, or unenforceable provision or provisions had never been contained herein.
Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 2285.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, sing if I'm saying aye? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2285 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Six, zero. Ordinance number 2285, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding to purchase one vehicle for the Eureka Springs Parks Department and declaring an emergency.
Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2285 in its second read.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, sing if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2285 for its third and final reading by title only.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yep.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2285, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding to purchase one vehicle for the Eureka Springs Parks Department and declaring an emergency.
Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2285 in its third read.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yep.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Six, zero.
Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that to, that we invoke the emergency clause for ordinance number 2285.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, again.
Six, zero. Please. Emergency clause, section four. The City Council upon the recommendation of the Parks Commission of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, finds that because of the need to continue scheduled services, avoid potential loss of revenue, and time and manufacturing constraints for this unit, it is in the best interest and for the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of Eureka Springs to purchase this one vehicle as described above for the city, that an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and therefore this ordinance shall go into full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you. All right, that brings us up to new business number four, update on auditorium. There motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss update on auditorium, second.
Second.
I met with the architect and structural engineer this morning downstairs to finalize the, the plans. I believe y'all may have updated on the, the final plan of putting the auditorium downstairs in the, in the basement, along with putting in an ADA bathroom downstairs also. We are looking at probably getting the 90% review copy in here within the next couple of weeks, along with the set of specifications for this. And then we're hoping to, after that, be able to start advertising in the paper for bids. Our plan is, after going through and having a bid opening probably somewhere around mid-October and presenting those to the council by October 21st. So hopefully by October 21st, we'll have a, uh, numbers on what we're going to be doing down there. We went down and, like I said today, looked and made some final, uh, design, uh, construction changes, along with, with the structural engineer about how we're going to handle the foundation and the pit. The elevator's going to require approximately a 14-inch pit, and I think most of y'all, we talked about it before. Somehow, uh, there is a 5/8 inch rebar, 12 inches on center each direction suspended under the floor. We don't have any idea what or how that, what it's holding up. It's a mystery of how they constructed it, but the structural engineer came up with a pretty creative way of taking care of it. The bars are actually in tension, and you can literally take a sledgehammer and bounce it off the reinforcing, and it bounces. So it's almost like it's post-tension slab without the concrete. So what the structural engineer's going to do, we're going to form a perimeter beam around it and encapsulate the, uh, the reinforcing, so we can cut that and dig the pit down. And then we'll go ahead and, as the drawings show, create a, uh, the elevator, and then we'll have a bridge going across to it, uh, and an entryway from, to the street. Yes, ma'am?
It's on the backside, correct?
On the backside, off First Street. So, but that's kind of where we are on there.
Any, any bids on our house on our street?
No, we've, we, that's a totally separate issue.
Okay.
But no, we've, just for your information, we've gone ahead and re-advertised that in the statewide paper.
Okay, because we were going to use that money from this. All right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mitch.
Yeah, all right. Any further questions? All right. All right, Dave brings us up to an update on the street plan.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Dwayne is here, and in your packet is an update for the, the street plan noting what's been completed and what, and what he has pending at this point. Also, I think probably, just for council to know, and Dwayne can touch on this briefly, we met with a gas company, and they're going to be putting in a new gas line and setting a new, uh, what do they call it?
Black Hills Energy, the substation's going to be moved down off of Corner Echoes and, and East Mountain.
Yeah, that substation that there's now will be going away, and they're going to be putting in a new substation out close to where the dog, dog-
Humane Society.
Humane Society is. But doing that, there's going to be coming in and digging up along East Mountain and putting in new gas lines. Is that-
Yeah, that's going to be the first phase.
That's first phase.
Everything's starting first of January 2020.
Eventually, overall, they're going to be putting in new gas lines throughout the entire city over the next three to four years, according to the plan. Mr. McClung?
Okay, most of those gas lines, are they under the streets, or are they in right-of-ways? Well, you know, as you get down, of course, in the older part of town, a lot of it is in the street and everything's together. Up, up there, beginning's going to be a little easier. You're talking a lot of state right-of-way to begin with, they're coming in, and then when they get into us, a lot of it is not in the street there, but- East Mountain? Right. Is not in the street? Yeah, but we're, at that point, we're, we're obviously looking at our plan too, you know, for overlay as we move ahead, what we need to do. And of course, they're going to work and they're going to, we're talking about next month, a public meeting, Black Hills Energy's coming in, try to get a little- Yeah, that's why I say you hate to do too much, but, you know, if they're going to come in and butcher your street and- Right, right, yeah. And, and of course, if, if they know we're going to do something, they want to try to get ahead of it, but- Right. But, you know, it's going to, it's going to be a mess, obviously, once we, we start coming downtown, so, uh, it makes sense, the first year will be out there on the highway, coming down East Mountain. So we're, so this plan, we, anything that we had in that area, we backed off and come out below that, so, and that's something we'll have to look at as the year goes, you know, like, we're talking four or five years perhaps, you know, we'll have to look at that. Yeah. Yeah, and they're, they're talking of new services, up to moving the meters to the homes, I mean, completely. I mean, when it's done, it'll be, it'll be fantastic, everything will be mapped, but it's, it's going to be tough getting there.
Ms. Harmon?
All right, so I've got a number on here, 346375. Is that what we started out at, or has this been adjusted?
Well, we bumped, we bumped a little, some on the, on the overlay, so, you know, some of this, like I said, we've completed, we've done, of course, this is what we, we threw out at the beginning of the year, some projects that were forced to come in, but, you know, kind of on that bottom line now, we're talking, this is the phase we're getting into where we want to overlay this fall. So, of course, that won't really be set, we're going to, we're going to bid that, so I'd reduce some of that. I think, was talking to the providers, the people that will be bidding on this, it's a little, a little better than we thought, perhaps, on the price, but we want to-
So the 346 remains, and then you've got the additional on the overlay of the 111?
No, no, everything, that's, that's the total. The top that we'll push is the 346, right. No, anything would be below that, yeah.
Okay, so that 111 is included in your 346?
Right, yeah, and, and like I said, we, you know, we had to move in the extra mid-year to, to, to cover the 346, so, but yeah, we won't, we won't extend past that. We will, everything, and then, and when we bid it, it's going to be based on, you know, square yards, and so if, if the bids come in, because we, the bid will include, you know, fixing some soft spots or cuts, because we don't want to overlay or, or, you know, like you said, we don't want to overlay a leaking water line or something that's going to seep later, so that's being included in this cost. We're thinking, you know, around 110, we can, we can, we can make those. And what we're looking at here is, this year, on that overlay, is some of the, the higher traffic areas that we haven't got to yet, that, that RDOT's not going to, you know, next year we'll be back looking for grants from RDOT for the sales tax, and some of these areas that we're looking at here, they're not, you know, it's a tight 16-inch, I mean, 16-foot streets, they're not going, that's not going to go into the grant, so this will, is something that we're going to have to do in-house, so. And, you know, we're also looking at, you know, some of that we're talking about on the water detection, we're putting those meters in, detection meters in the system, and we're, we're not doing any overlay in that area too, because we're, we're kind of starting on the top with that too, of course, the same reasons before we come downtown. So, those, those streets are, you know, we're finishing out the school area, and then, and some of the arteries that we want to complete, and so hopefully, that's what we want to do, is, is get approval, go to bid, and see what else we can do.
And I just have one other question. The new gas line and the substation that you were talking about, you said this was going to start in 2019, or it will be actually on 2020?
2020, yes.
Okay, so is there a number on that, an estimate?
Well, though that, when they come in, they have set aside $10 million for this project, Black Hills Energy, so, which we anticipate won't be enough before it's done. But on our end, what we're, we're looking at is, if anything they tear up, they're going to repair, our costs won't be there, but, but they're not overlaying, they're just going to be, you know, patching.
So we'll still have that cost, or we'll still have that expense in 2020, based on what they do and how well they-
Well, some of those areas that we may want to come back in, of course, they'll have to, to, to make this, you know, compact it and then patch it, but some of those areas we will have to come back in, probably overlay, you know, if it, if it's needing it now, that won't change. But those numbers will be reflected, like you said, as we go each year, as we look at it, as we look at 2020, then those numbers will come out.
Mr. Meyer?
Did the price asphalt good then?
Your what?
Your last estimate was higher for Echols and Hale.
Right, yeah, I'm, and of course, you know, I don't have, the bids, you know, I'm, we're word of mouth, and, and I could be wrong, it could come up, but I'm, I'm more optimistic of the cost of asphalt this time than I was in January. All right. So I'm looking at, is, that's where I'm thinking we can, we can squeeze it in, these are the just updated numbers.
Can we make those streets a little bumpy so that they don't speed?
Well, you know, it's, some people, it's, the fear of when we do it, they, they are going to go faster, but-
Yeah, I'm afraid they will.
Uh, but, you know, it's, and we've talked about that at some point, if we, we have to put some control in there, but that's, that's always, there's two sides to that too, as you know, so. But some of that, you know, we, we have to- But some of that, you know, we, we have to, we have to get it before, you know, we have some that we're going to try to address next year that is to the point where we can't overlay it. We're going to have to peel it back and almost start over because, you know, if you go too long, you know, and it's poorly constructed, so some of these we have to try to get sealed or we're going to, we're going to lose them.
It almost looks like Council Street should be ripped up and completely.
Well, I think, I think we can level that and, and overlay it, but yeah, it's, we're going to have to worry about drainage there and, and then, like you said, speeding could be an issue.
Are you going to cut and do some culverts to run the stormwater before you do the overlay?
We've done some work there in Barreville already, trying to get, you know, in Lindsey and that area, trying to get a head over.
Like right at the top of Council Street where Echols comes in, you know, there's that ditch on the left, if you're coming down the aisle, that ditch on the left-hand side and, you know, you could put a culvert across there.
Yeah, that's something we're looking at that make, may, you know, reduce our, you know, linear footage too, but, but we're, you know, looking at some, of course, as we come, the ditch work and then there will be some culverts involved, but of course, if you, if you don't address the drainage, you know, you're going to lose your payment and.
Right.
And, so, and, and we've got to watch, you know, if you get too thick of your curbs, if you come up, you're going to be flooding homes and, so. But I think what we're looking at, we can make this happen for, you know, like I said, I might have to roll back some of the footage here, but I think we can make it work for this.
Well, hope so. No further comments, questions?
And Cory is draining beautifully.
No, that's, that's, we finally got that project completed over there, so.
Do you know, that's like the fifth time that that thing has been moved and shifted and I made that comment to the boys working on it, they said, this is the last time.
It's working, yeah.
Yes, well, and yes, since basement's not getting flooded anymore and we don't drown as we drive through and so it's, I'm not kidding, it's really impressive.
And then it's, you know, that's not on the list, but we, we hope to do that next year in that area, then once we get that drainage settled, then we want to, to do that area.
I'm all for it.
Any further comments, questions? All right, thank you, Dwayne, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Bye.
All right, our next item is discussion for summary of food truck survey.
Motion to discuss?
Second.
I think you all have a copy of the survey that we sent out. We noted that we had sent out, you know, 71 restaurateurs, restaurateurs, food purveyors, got a 21% response rate back, which really isn't bad considering.
That's great.
And out of that, I think you also note too, that 80% were supportive, had 20%, opposed, which is basically round that down to 12 were in favor and three were opposed. Some of their comments, I think, were pretty, pretty enlightening as you can read through here and see it. Some of them also talk about some of the concerns that we had also regarding bricks and mortars and some of those, uh, things that we were concerned about as we're sending, when we're going through this ordinance, so. Any comments, Ms. Snyder?
Um, well, just to be a little clear, there were 71 restaurants and food purveyors, 15 responded out of 71. I only see one question, says question number one. Am I missing any other questions?
Now that, we tried to keep it simple. We wanted to know if you were supportive or opposed to food trucks.
Okay, yeah, I was going to say, let's let them know what we asked them.
Having more than one food truck operate.
We asked if they would be opposed or supportive allowing more than one food truck to operate on food truck properties during high-volume special events only. We had three that were opposed and 12 that were supportive and nobody that didn't have an opinion. So that's actually the breakdown there. Um, yeah, the comments are interesting, it's exactly what I expect on those. So are we going to be doing more questions later or just that one?
At this point, that was it.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? All right. Moving on, that does bring us up to the ordinance where we were amending the, clarifying the use of the food trucks and trailers at special events. This was going to allow to operate multiple food courts or multiple food trucks at single use. Ms. Snyder?
Um, I make a motion to discuss.
Okay. A second. That motion, Ms. Snyder?
Okay, since, for whatever reason, we never got around to voting on this.
Correct.
I think we should like start again or work on this, go through it and do some voting because we, none of this is actually done because we never voted. We forgot to.
That's true. We, we got it stopped because y'all wanted to do a survey.
Oh, that's right, okay.
There's a motion back in the back of, of what happened on that ordinance.
Okay, so now that we've got the survey with the one question, that's considered the survey, right?
Yes.
Okay. Then my motion is to go ahead and read and do whatever we're doing. It's been so long now, I don't remember what the.
Sign an ordinance number and read, and read for passing?
Well, it's just been so long, I forgot.
I'm first reading.
Yeah.
All right, I make a motion that we give the ordinance a number and read it for its first passage or its first reading.
Thank you. Second.
Ms. Harmon seconded first.
Correct.
Okay. All right, any further questions?
The ordinance, sorry.
All those in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The ordinance number will be 2286 and ordinance amending Title IV of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code to clarify use of food trucks and/or trailers at special events, whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs desires to expand the use of food trucks at special events. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, the Title IV of the Municipal, Municipal Code be amended as follows. Section 1, subsection 4.41.04 shall be amended to add as follows. 4.41.04, mobile food trucks and/or trailers may be allowed to set up and operate as part of city-approved special events as are permitted under 4.56 of the Municipal Code. All food trucks and trailers so operating must be listed on the special, on the initial special event application as required by section 4.56 and approved as part of the approval of the event. Operation of food trucks and/or trailers as part of special events shall be required to meet all requirements of the Municipal Code except as to location and may only operate during the hours of the approved special event. Said food trucks and/or trailers operating under this ordinance must be located on city-owned property or as additional units on approved lottery properties. Limitations on the number of trucks and/or trailers shall not apply during permitted special events. Section 2, all provisions of the ordinances of the City of Eureka Springs in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed and all other provisions of the ordinances of the City of Eureka Springs not in conflict with the provisions of this shall remain in full force and effect. Section 3, severability, should any sentence, paragraph, clause, phrase, or section of this ordinance be adjudged or held to be unconstitutional, illegal, or invalid, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance as a whole or any part of provision thereof other than the part so decided to be invalid, illegal, or unconstitutional and shall not affect the validity of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code as a whole.
All right, get on. Motion to?
I make a motion that we accept ordinance number 2286 on its first reading.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and second, discussion. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, uh, what, how the process would be established for permitting them on public city-owned property?
They would come in and apply for a permit and we would go through the similar process with Public Works and Police to see if there's, you know, any issues into there or if they're creating a problem before we allow anything to be established into there.
Okay.
Mr. McQuaid?
Uh, what about, uh, cost? What, you know, what's, what's the city going to charge for that setup? Is that going to be, is this going to fall under the event organizer that's going to set that up? Uh, that's kind of the way I think it sounds here.
Are you referring to a fee?
If, if, yeah, if they're going to set up on us over here at the parking lot between here and the courthouse, what are we going to charge them?
There's already a fee.
There's already a fee on there. Um, we got the par, are you? Yeah, uh.
It's $9 a day.
No, that's for a parking spot.
Well, I know, that's what it would be, end up being.
Well, I don't think that's, I don't think that's sufficient.
We can amend it. Ms. Harmon?
Well, I mean, some of those, some of those, I mean, I agree with you because some of those trucks will, they'll take up more than one spot.
Sure they will.
And as a daily.
They'll have to pay for two.
As a daily rate, it would seem like we should have something in place forced under the special event if they choose, if, if those city lots or city locations are available, what would be the fee?
It'd be $9 per space.
I understand what you're saying, but you're talking about just a parking lot. What if it were on another location that is city-owned? If you decided to put a, a food truck there and, and maybe there aren't any, but if there was another location that wasn't the city parking lot, what would that fee be? If it's not technically a parking place or a parking spot like what we have right out the door from us?
I understand.
So.
Mr. McQuaid?
I think, I think that you've got to establish a fee, and I understand what she's saying. If, if like it's, as an example, in this parking lot next to the building here and, and they need two parking spots or three parking spots, then it would be that plus a base fee whether it's $100 a day or $150 a day or something. I mean, I don't, I think there should be something.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you. I think it's up to the council for us to, I think that's a good point. I think council needs to go ahead and, and put that in there as an amendment. Ms. Snyder?
I think council needs to realize they're shooting themselves in the foot. Have y'all forgotten why this even came up? We had a zombie crawl last year that couldn't feed the people. Now we're trying to feed the people, we're trying to make the people happy, so we're going to sit there and charge money for the people making our visitors happy?
That's what we do.
Geez, well, we, maybe that's what you do. Decent people don't. Try using your brains and think of the people. We are going to put food out there by allowing this and the city is going to be getting tax money in. You want to get paid twice for the same damn thing.
Ms. Harmon?
Um, just a quick question on that. If, if we were to determine what the, the, if there was a special event fee for additional locations or additional spots for food trucks, we wouldn't necessarily have to have the amounts in here, but we would have to state that it was a, would be a requirement of, a requirement of a special event, correct?
Right, we charge a fee for special events now. Can we?
I guess what I'm saying is we wouldn't have to establish an amount in here, but we would have to clarify that there, there could be, would be, will probably be an additional fee for that, for that food truck.
Mr. Weaver?
Well, you wouldn't have to put it in here, but you would have to pass that another ordinance, putting it in, in order to collect it. So it might as well be added to, if you're going to have such a fee, to this one, to keep the organization of the ordinance.
In one place?
In one place.
Okay, gotcha.
I'd like to ask Jeff to go up to the microphone, please.
I was going to mention, I, we've already kind of begun talking with like Travis Holloway, for example, which again, he has the lot by Chelsea's that is approved. And when you're talking about fees, you're talking about, it's basically a rental fee is what it is for that.
Sure.
For that particular space. And so, you know, in talking with most of the food trucks that I've, I've spoken with, you know, they don't have a problem paying a fee to rent a space. Travis is providing a power drop though, so there's, there's other things to think about, you know, it's not just a space that you're getting, you know, in a parking lot, for example. Some food truck courts, you know, they'll have picnic tables out front, so that's included in whatever you charge. So from an event perspective, you know, I mean, like the money that Travis is going to be charging, that's just going to him. I'm not seeing that. He's just basically helping me out by allowing food trucks, if this gets passed, to be in his lot. So he can charge that fee because it is his, his, you know, space and he is losing money that day, you know, he's going to lose parking. So I guess I would just suggest that if you are going to look into, you know, charging a fee, then maybe find out, I think, you know, Travis was saying $100 for a food truck and most of them didn't blink twice at that, you know. When, when you think about the amount of people that are going to be there, they're going to make that money back, no problem. But again, you have to look at, you know, apples to apples and not to oranges, so if you're going to charge, let's say $100, what other amenities can you provide to that food vendor that they might be getting in a private lot? So, any other questions, I am here.
Mr. Kim? Travis, Travis provides electricity to the food truck. I don't think he provides water to them.
That, I'm not sure. Yeah, like I said, I, I haven't moved forward too far with it because I've been waiting on this and I didn't want to get, you know.
But I know he, he's had that food truck down there for quite a long time. The guy pays a monthly fee, as a matter of fact.
And there are some food trucks that don't even take an electrical drop, you know, a lot of them do bring their own generators as well.
Sure.
I'm sorry, yeah.
I guess, you know, my thing is on this ordinance, which Tim has clarified, that it would be nice to have it all in one place, is that if we can word this in such a way that if they choose to go on a private lot, then there may be additional requirements or additional amenities that are provided by that property owner, but the same applies to the city lots as well and that would be determined by the city.
Right.
So, that's all I'm saying. And the question really is just in my mind is, kind of back to what Terry was saying, should it be in this ordinance and should it be worded in a way that, that gives us the opportunity to do that and then provide them at a later point what that list of, of things are?
Yeah, well, and it's something that would have to go through department head review anyway, you know, during the special event permitting process, so it could be determined at that point, because as you mentioned, it's not just going to be city parking lots. I mean, I've got an ice cream vendor that wants to have an ice cream, homemade ice cream stand right there in Basin Park and I'm like, huh, yeah, so.
Ms. Strucker?
Yeah. When council was deliberating this ordinance in June, your decision, discussion decision at that point was, we're going to eliminate city property from this ordinance because you didn't want to give up parking spots, but you didn't vote on that and so it's still in this ordinance. What you wanted instead was to go poll the people and find out how they felt, so we did. We still have 10,000 hungry zombies coming at us. So, um, just to refresh your memory, you didn't want city property included in this in the first place.
I remember that.
Okay, Ms. McQuaid?
Uh, yeah, and so I guess what I need is a clarification of what is approved lottery properties. Is that properties that fall into the lottery districts?
Yes.
Yes.
Literally.
The ones that I already have, the lottery like Travis's and the others have already been approved.
So, so there, you've only got one downtown then? So, so there, you've only got one downtown that would be a benefit, and that'd be Travis's, so what's the other one?
Main Street, the parking lot at the, where the colossal cupcakes is, they haven't set up yet, but they have the right to set up.
They do. But nobody else has put in, so they don't lose their, the first of June.
They did win the lottery.
They had so many days to put that in, too.
Or it would default to the next person who wanted it, but there was nobody else on Main Street who entered the lottery for that sector.
Okay.
Kim, what was your?
There are four lottery properties, four sectors, four lottery properties. Some of them are located up on the rim. They happen to be next to trolley stops where hungry dead people were gathered last year.
Seven thousand. Okay, Mr. McClung?
Uh, okay. I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, strike, uh...
You'd like to amend it?
The city-owned properties in Section 1.
And the dark...
And any other locations that it's mentioned as potential...
Read it?
Points of locations.
Do you wanna read it the way you want it? Sorry.
Yeah, would you please read what you want?
Well, it'd be, uh, that it's what we, is defined in the yellow. It, it would read, "Said food trucks and/or trailers operating on this ordinance must be located, uh, on approved lottery properties."
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I get a second?
Second.
Additional units on...
Okay.
Discussion, Mr. Thomas?
Well, I would just, you know, if you look at the four lottery properties, realistically, how many additional trucks can you get? I mean, Travis might get one more.
Oh, he could get several more if he wanted to get the parking, I mean, and then, and down here at the, at the, in the parking lot that the Crescenta has, or the New Or-...
And also the two on top of the hill.
He could have a half a dozen or...
The two on top of the hill, it's a pretty good size, too. So, there's two or three?
Well, I'm thinking, I know it's nice to get on the trolley to go eat, but, you know, it's nicer just to grab a sandwich downtown, yeah.
I gave up that argument last time.
Just, one other thing, and, and actually, the nice thing downtown is that if, if, if they had multiple units at, in Travis's lot or on Main Street, they'd be centrally located or they'd be, you know, where people could go, hey, it's down here, they're all down here, go down there and pick what you want, they got all kinds of goodies.
Ms. Green?
Um, a question for Jeff. Jeff, do you need this ordinance done so that you can get food trucks for your zombie crowd?
It would be nice, yeah, I mean, we're...
So, we need, we need to read this three times and kinda...
Another emergency. Yeah, we, we've been holding off, you know, just 'cause, like I said, I don't wanna make promises, uh...
Right, 'cause it would be nice that you could advertise and tell people where there's going to be food.
Yep. I mean, I have a handful that I've, you know, I have in mind, but I haven't been able to confirm anything with anyone yet, so...
Mr. Thomas?
I just got a question. Would you then, like, on zombie weekend, if somebody owned a food truck and they wanted to rent two of your slots here for nine dollars a day, would you not allow that?
No, no, if we take it off this, remove this.
Okay.
All right. Anybody, we're on the amendments, what we're talking about. Any further discussion on the amendment? I thought we had a second?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor of the amendments, sing five, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, five, one. All right. Back to the original ordinance. Any further discussion? Uh, we ready to vote on the ordinance, on the first?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of approving ordinance 2286?
Nobody has moved to approve.
I thought we did.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2286.
I apologize, you said to accept.
Oh, okay.
And so, yes.
To read, yes.
My mistake.
Okay. All those in favor of approving ordinance 2286 on the first reading, sing five, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, two.
I make a motion that we read ordinance number 2286 by title only for a second reading and suspend the rules to do so.
Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Snyder. Ms. Green, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Uh, on the initial application, it says that all food trucks and trailers so operating must be listed on the initial special event application. Couldn't it, wouldn't it be better to list the number because, so that you don't have to, then have the names of specific trucks when you make your application? Like, he could say, "Two at Holloways and four at, you know, Cupcakes," and that kind of thing.
Yeah, because that, that is something I noticed on there that, that obviously, that bugs me because I don't have the specific specifics, and you won't have them. I mean, just to give you an idea, typically with zombie crawl, we submit our application the week after the zombie crawl. So, we're, we're, you know, a year in advance looking out. And the other issue, I know that when, I think when I originally discussed it with Kim, she had talked about, I think Bobby Ray going out and looking to just, to determine how many can you fit, you know, safely in one of these spaces. And so, from an event organizer's, you know, perspective, that's something that we would need to know ahead of time. How many spaces can you get in Travis's lot or in another lot? And that gives us an idea of, you know, what we have to work with.
Mr. Thomas?
So, then I would have moved to amend that sentence that starts, "All food trucks and/or trailers so operating," to read the number of food trucks and trailers so operating.
Second section, second sentence of 4.41.04F. Second sentence. I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas, the number of...
The number of food trucks and trailers so operating must be listed on the initial special event.
What do you wanna change?
Instead of all, you want the number.
Well, "all food trucks and trailers" implies you're naming the ones that are gonna be there.
So, the full sentence will read, "The number of food trucks and/or trailers so operating must be listed on the initial special event application." I wanna make sure I have it right.
Substituting the number for the word "all."
I wanna make sure I have it right.
Number of food trucks.
Yeah.
Three, okay. Ms. Harmon?
Just, I have just a question about 4.5, Section 4.56. Does it, does it really state?
I did, oh...
Now, we're, we're on the amendment.
Oh.
Was there a second to the amendment?
Oh, second.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm awake.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry. As required by Section 4.56?
Yeah, what does 4.56 say? Do, do we have to fix that, too? Or does it specifically say, um, that we have to list, with the list those?
Just, let her look it up. I've already done it, but if she wants to confirm it, let's do that.
I just wanna know what it says, just, just to make sure that if we need to, to change that, too, then it reads correctly.
Well, you can read it at home and we can change it next week. Oh, we're gonna emergency closet.
There's no emergency here.
Just asked a question.
No, there's no emergency clause.
Uh, okay. As permitted by Section, and provided, and I don't think there's...
You don't think it has anything specific?
No.
Can I see that?
All right.
I'm sorry, Tim.
All right. Any further discussion?
No.
On this amendment? And, of course, take a break?
Vote, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So, Jeff, have you seen the zombie shirt I designed for the first zombie crawl? It's been that long.
Have I seen it?
Yeah. I sold it in my shop across the street. It said, "I like zombies, do not eat."
Thank you.
And then, mm-hmm, for the second one, it was zombie-friendly, please do not eat.
Susan, those things are reviewed before they come to the table to make sure it's a type product?
Am I not allowed to ask a question?
I just wanted to assure you that we're very careful to bring a good product to the table.
Okay, well, that's okay. I'm, I'm, I'm questioning...
Mr. McClung, we're...
We're waiting on you.
Waiting for your vote.
I tried to vote for you, but they wouldn't let me.
We, we all wanted to vote for you.
That is a vote without...
Okay. Uh, all right. All those in favor of the amendment, sing five, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, all right. So, I'm, we are, where are we now?
There was a motion to suspend the rules and place it on its second reading.
And it was a second?
Yes, there was.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Oh, okay.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Six, zero. Ordinance number 2286, an ordinance amending Title IV of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code to clarify use of food trucks and/or trailers at special events.
All right. Get a motion to approve ordinance 2286 on the second reading.
So moved, since you already said it.
Second. Please make the motion.
I make a motion that we, what, now you got me confused.
Approved.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2286 on its second reading.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? The real call, all those in favor, sing five, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Question?
Ms. Green, um, Snyder?
Can we do a third reading without having, um, the emergency clause attached?
We got, we're, we have the emergency clause here.
Okay. In that case, I make a motion that we suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2286 by title only on its third reading.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yeah.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Six, zero. Ordinance number 2286, an ordinance amending Title IV of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code to clarify use of food trucks and/or trailers at special events.
All right. Ms. Snyder?
I make a motion that we accept, uh, accept, approve, ordinance number 2286 on its third and final reading.
Second.
Suspending the rules.
All right, motion being second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Six, zero.
Got it. Emergency clause?
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, sir.
I don't think he needs it, and he's got plenty of time. I mean, it's gonna go, it goes into effect in 30 days.
He's gotta let his people know.
I mean, it's there. I mean, it's, it's a...
That's true.
It's there. You're good.
September 9th, they'll be available on October 9th. Yeah, that's absolutely...
Yeah, it's, it's approved.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Thank you, Mr. McClung.
Certainly.
You're right. Yeah, there's no need for emergency clause, it, uh, it will pass. All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. McClung. All right, uh, okay, and this brings us up to item number eight, discussion of the hospital. Uh, Ms. Green, Mr. McClung, motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss, second.
Have Mr. House here, been sitting...
Yeah, yeah. Can you move?
I know. Uh, I'm not sure, I know there's been some things in the newspaper, various items, so, I guess there's certain things that we can talk about and certain things we cannot talk about.
Why don't, why don't you talk about the things that you can? There was a, I, I couldn't make any sense of what was in the paper, I'm sorry.
Which part?
Oh, God, where do we start? All of the above?
Well, let me just kinda give you a rundown of, of the situation as it stands. Uh, I think pretty much everybody in the community is aware that the Eureka Springs Hospital has been having some operational difficulties with respect to finances and with respect to maintenance of the building and a variety of their, of other issues such as cutting back on services that they provide. And so, as the commission, part of our responsibility is to make sure that the company that is running the hospital for us, which is Allegiance Health Management out of, I believe, Shreveport, Louisiana, that they are fulfilling the obligations in their lease. And so, that's what we've been focusing on at this point.
Are they fulfilling it?
They've had some problems fulfilling it, and in our opinion, they are not.
And what can you do to correct that, or...
We have, we have a council that we've retained out of Little Rock, and they've been working with us and advising us on the actions that we can take. Now, I can tell you that we did notify them about, I believe, six weeks ago, that they were in default on their lease with respect to maintenance of the building. And so, we sent them a multi-page document of, of issues that our inspectors found, and then they have responded to that, and we're kind of going back and forth right now with that.
Do you expect them to, you know, keep up with their agreement, or is this gonna be...
The, um, their past history with other hospitals in Arkansas calls that into question.
Okay, okay, 'cause I like our hospital, and I would really hate to lose it, and I appreciate your work with it.
We're gonna do everything we can to make sure that we retain our hospital and that it is something that we can all be proud of. And so, I think all of us on the commission, the hospital commission are committed to that end.
Ms. Harmon?
Okay, so, um, when you said you retained some additional help counsel on the maintenance issues, so you guys are going back and forth, back and forth to determine whether or not they have or have not met those obligations, correct? And, yes?
Well, that, that's, um, the council that we retain is, is the, just our commission council. The, the firm that we were using, the attorney has stopped doing litigation, and so we felt that since litigation might be a possibility in the future, that we wanted to work with a firm that could do that. Uh, and so, this firm was recommended to us because they worked with Dardanelle Hospital, which was another hospital that Allegiance was running. And so, we knew that they had experience working with rural hospitals and working with, dealing with this company out of Louisiana.
Okay, so they're, they're representing your concerns, not necessarily being a mediary in between both parties, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, at this point, um, at this point, has Allegiance presented to you, approached your counsel as being that person who will be answering questions and, and whatnot for them regarding your concerns on maintenance?
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking me. I'm not sure I understand what you're asking me.
Since you've hired counsel...
Yes.
...to represent the commission...
Yes.
...and ask the questions and/or determine whether or not they are in default or not complying to what your requests have been.
Yes.
I'm assuming that they will have someone...
They have their own counsel, yes.
Okay, all right. So, and how long do you think this process will take?
Well, we've heard back from them, and the, at this point, it's just a matter of working out the details as far as what their response will evolve. You have to remember that we have a lease with Allegiance, and they have until 2022 on this lease. So any change that might occur either has to fall within the confines of that lease or both parties have to agree to that change. So I can't give you an idea of how long that will take.
And further questions? Dr. House, I think the other comments that came up, and somebody tried to mention it earlier too, was talking about the issue of 25 North Street.
Yes.
I think the council, your commission, rather, came up with some, an idea that we read about in the paper.
Yes.
Yes.
So would you like to elaborate a little bit and see where we...
The, we, we had, of course, quite a bit of discussion about that house on North Street. And we, there was mixed feelings as to whether or not it would benefit the hospital commission to have that property. It's not real clear that it would. It would need quite a bit of work before we would feel comfortable using it again as a clinic. And at this point, we don't, you know, the commission itself doesn't really, we're not operating a hospital. Allegiance is operating the hospital for us. So we don't have an immediate need for another building. And we are also anticipating that something might occur, that we have to run the hospital in an emergency situation, and so we want to be very careful with how we spend our money. And then it was brought up that historically, that house was built as part of the hospital property, and it was used by the nuns that, that was the convent. I don't know if you call it a convent, but that was where they lived, the nuns that, that ran the hospital. And somewhere along the line, it kind of got shifted. I don't know if it got shifted necessarily, but when the hospital commission was created, somehow that didn't get included. And so the opinion of the hospital commission was that we should, it just should simply be part of the hospital property and to, that's, was, that was essentially what we came up with, was that we just felt like it should be part of the hospital property. So, yes.
Do you think maybe that the hospital would, want to trade where the hospital is now and move it over there to 25 North Street? It might be a more practical operation.
Well, as a physician, I can tell you that that would not be adequate.
Okay, I'm just curious.
I don't know.
Ms. Harmon?
I know in one of the articles that was written, it said, there was a mention of a resolution, that y'all passed a resolution to request, and I don't have the wording here right in front of me, but basically to request that the city gift Nora Street, the Nora Street property back to the hospital.
Yeah.
And I, and I guess my question is, because I don't have it here in front of me, what was the, what was the vote on that? How many people, was it unanimous or was it mixed?
I believe it was a unanimous vote.
Okay. And then as being a representative of that commission, do you still feel that, do you still feel that the city should, should gift that property to the hospital?
Well, it seems to me that it would be like asking to take Basin Park and say, well, we want to sell it to the Parks Commission. That doesn't make any sense. It's a park. That is a clinic. It's next to the hospital. It's been part of the hospital. So basically, you're asking this department to take money and put it over here. We just didn't see the logic behind that.
Okay, so I'll, I'll take that as a yes. You still feel that, that the city should...
Yes.
Mr. Lauder?
Yeah, I'm tired too. Doesn't the city own the hospital?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and doesn't the city own Nora Street?
They do.
So what's with giving here and giving there?
Well, I think that...
I'm getting lost here?
I think that kind of, you know, one of the points that I brought up in this discussion was that everything that we do as part of the hospital commission is simply an extension of the city, because we are a city commission...
Right.
...and the property is owned by the city. So...
So basically, you're not asking us to give it back to you, you're asking us to save it for you. Would probably be more appropriate.
Semantically, yes. I'd probably...
Well, that's a little bit clear.
Yes.
I think what, what it is, is we would give, let the, the hospital commission take over that building and take over the maintenance and upkeep and the utilities and all that right now.
Right, but that's, that's a decision we have to make, is do we want to let them run it, or do we want to do whatever we want?
And/or, or sell it.
Okay.
Mr. Thomas?
When the nuns gave this gift, they gave it to the city, correct? And the city gave the hospital to the commission?
They didn't give it to us. They just put us in charge of running it.
The city had no obligation to give you Nora Street property.
Nope, it did not.
So then why would you say that it's yours? You should get it.
I didn't say it was mine.
Oh, well, that you should get it.
And I, I think I've been clear that it's a city property.
Right.
The hospital's a city property. You all can decide whatever you want to do with that. But as a commission, we discussed it, and it was originally presented to us to buy it. And again, I think that was kind of like, it's kind of like coming to us and saying, we want you to buy the hospital. But we're, we're not in that, I mean, that's not what we do. And so I believe that was the response of the commission, was that, no, this is something that historically had been part of the hospital, so what's the, we didn't really see the logic behind that.
Mr. Meyer? Well, the city, I think we can all agree that the city decided to put it up for sale because we didn't want to maintain it. You know, there's, there's black mold downstairs, there's all kinds of thing, issues with it. It's not getting, appreciating in value right now.
Correct.
So, and that's why there was no use for it, and that's why we were going to just sell it. If the hospital commission takes over, will the hospital commission spend money on it to keep it from going downhill?
I don't believe that I have the authority to answer that question.
Well, that's...
You know, because it's just like this board. We, we have to vote on things and discuss it.
So that wasn't discussed when you discussed the...
No.
Then, okay, what about the other little house that the hospital board purchased?
We did buy that, yes.
What's the disposition with it? Would you explain why they bought the house and...
Yes.
...get your plans and...
So the reason that we purchased that property that is to the south, I believe that's to the south of the hospital, was to further the plans for expanding the hospital. Currently, we are landlocked, and if we, I think it's become clear to everybody who's ever had anything to do with this, that we're not going to build a new hospital. And for a variety of reasons, but probably the, the biggest one is that in order for us to maintain that critical access hospital status that Medicare has for us, we can't move. And so if we can't move, the only other option we have is to expand. And that property became available at what we felt like was a very good price, and there's quite a bit of property there land-wise.
I understand.
And so we felt like it, it made sense for the long-term goals of the hospital.
It seems as though the other lots that came with the house would be good for expansion, but perhaps the house itself...
The house itself, we have no plans for.
Could be cut off and sold off.
Well, the, that whole piece, if you look at the, the plans that the architects have come up with, that whole piece is utilized.
Okay. Ms. Snyder?
Would it behoove all of us to have a workshop with the commission and the council and go over, you know, thoroughly discuss on both sides what either group would do with the building, with Nora Street? If it's better to, to put money into it, to keep it for them, if it's better for us to sell it? Should we have a workshop and discuss this back and forth and see where we end up?
We certainly could, but somewhat to Ms. Harmon's question earlier, there didn't seem to be a real keen interest in having that property, other than just its historical inclusion in part of the hospital property. And I think the discussion was somewhat mixed on that aspect. We have three physicians on, on the commission, and all three of us look at that and say, well, we would not want our clinic there.
Okay, see, that's, see, that's the thing, since we talked about this, you've got new people on there...
Correct.
...on the commission this morning. Should we have a workshop, or do you want to just talk to your commission and say, do you want this or not, and let us know? Because right now, we're planning on selling it, y'all said you'd like it back. So, you know...
I think the question is, and the suggestion is, if you would go and approach your commission and seeing if they would take it, as Mr. Meyer said, and give a, fixing it up and maintain it and make sure that it wasn't being, going back into any further decay. And what's it? Ms. Harmon?
I think, I mean, I know I was the one that brought up the, the property in the discussion and the resolution that was brought forward or was mentioned that the commission did, but I think my bigger, my bigger concerns are over the relationship that you have with Allegiance at this point. I know, and, and I'll have to look at the, the numbers again and just see, you know, as far as the budget goes, because I don't have it here in front of me. But I know, I, I remember there being something about, there being about $8 million in liabilities. And my concern is, is that if that relationship with Allegiance goes away, what, what liabilities do you have? Is that on equipment that has, you know, a lease for, or a purchase plan for five years, 10 years, 15 years? What is it? And I think that is a bigger concern, more so than the Norris property at this point, is that relationship that exists or doesn't exist or can exist with Allegiance at this point and the liabilities that are out there right now. Because we all know that the city has a annual budget of maybe around $9 million. There's just not a lot of money to go around, and my concern would be if something did happen with that relationship, what is the plan to form a relationship fast enough with someone else with not, without bringing it to the city and saying, you know, we need, we need more taxes to pay for the hospital? I just don't think that money is there. In fact, I know that money isn't there, and, and those are my, those are my concerns right now as to that, how that relationship is going. And, and, you know, when you're in a relationship or that is, and I don't know, because I haven't talked to both sides, so I don't know how serious it is, I don't know how, how great it is, or if it's kind of in the middle. But I, I would caution what we say to make sure that we have things in place should that relationship go sour.
Obviously, that is foremost in our minds. You know, we, we have not done this blindly. We're, we've got several members who've been on the commission for a long time and have a good understanding of the history of that, that relationship. That being said, the original lease that was signed with Allegiance made provisions for that sort of thing. You know, what, what happens when their lease is up? And can they encumber things? And can they encumber the city? And the answer, of course, to that is no, they can't. They're a private corporation, and so we don't have access to their financial records beyond what they submit to Medicare. And so I, I can't alleviate your, your concerns as far as what actions they may have taken as a private corporation. But I can tell you that they certainly had no authority to encumber the city in any way. And so with respect to their operation, if suddenly they left town, then our responsibility would be to, to keep the hospital running. And that's why we have those reserves, so that we can do that, those financial reserves. But we would, as far as, you know, let's say that they'd run up a big bill somewhere. That bill is between that entity and Allegiance, a private corporation. Now, if it was necessary for running the hospital, then we would probably be stuck with trying to figure out how we're going to deal with that.
And, and I think that is probably the, the bigger issue when it, when it relates to a workshop, is that this council understands exactly what, what is in place or what could be in place in that situation.
Mm-hmm.
Just so that we're educated and we understand the same things that the commission understands.
Well, I will say that you all are always welcome to attend our meetings where we discuss these issues. And if, if a workshop is necessary, then we'll, we'll accommodate that. However, we, we have a meeting every month, and we discuss these issues quite in depth. And so, and of course, our minutes are available, just as there, as yours are. And our records are available. I think Kim probably has copies of all of those. But however we can, you know, help you all be comfortable, we're happy to do that, so...
Mr. McClung?
Just in regard to Nora Street, that, you know, we, we're looking at drawings for the basement tonight, you know, we're moving forward there. I think we still need to stay on task of putting it up for sale. You know, if, if we don't get an acceptable offer, that's one thing, and then we might look at it, you know, as an alternative. But, you know, I don't want to lose sight of what we got going on with the basement of this place either. And so, you know, like he said, he said it's, you know, it was, it was a part of the hospital property and all, and it's, it's more, more nostalgic than anything. So it's, it's not a, it's not a critical component of the hospital property.
In answer to your question, we have proceeded and we are advertising, and I think it's going to come out, if it wasn't in Sunday's paper, it'll be in this next Sunday's statewide paper.
Right.
Notes of taking bids for...
As far as it relates to that, at what point do you say, if, if we get no bids, at what point? Is there a time limit on that? Is there a, does the council have to come back and say, you know, we've, we've killed that? We're not going to do it?
Well, we've got, we've got a bid open date. If nobody comes up and submits any bids on that date, then I'll come back to the council in the next meeting and say, we didn't get any bids.
Okay, and then we can...
But chances are, we're going to get a bid. I mean, it may be the same amount, or it may be a few thousand dollars more, or maybe a few thousand dollars less.
Okay.
But I think we'll get a bid, or two, or four, on November, yeah, yeah. So anyway, we're going, I mean, you know, the council will know.
We'll just discuss it further at that point.
Well, that's...
Okay.
Further discussions? Mr. Dr. House? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, that brings us up to our next item, item number nine, discussion delivery of rental cars.
Motion to discuss, um, delivery of rental cars.
All right.
Second. Okay. I brought this up because I had two friends, one a commissioner on the HDC, try getting rental cars to come and get them in Eureka Springs, and they were told by an employee that they were not allowed to come to Eureka Springs. And kind of made it sound like it was us had some laws. So I called the manager in Harrison and talked to him, and he said, no. He said, I don't know why. You're the second person that has called this week and asked me about this. He said, we are going to correct it with the employee. So I did call Rogers, and they said, no, they don't have a problem. Their problems are the mileage over here. They will not come to Eureka because it's too far. They have, Harrison has a contract with, I don't remember the, about a shop between Berryville and Eureka. They will come and pick up people there with a car, so...
So this is a non-discussion?
This, pretty much. I'm sorry.
All right.
Yeah.
All right. That's good.
I mean, I thought it could be in our laws somewhere, and I did not, I went through everything and did not...
I ran into the same problem. They said, we're not going to give you a car because it's too far.
Yeah.
Come to Rogers and pick it up, or come to Harrison.
But see, they were telling, like they told Marty, no, we cannot come into Eureka Springs.
That's not true.
No.
Anyway, we know what it is. All right.
So you won't not change?
Any further discussion on rental cars in Eureka?
No. No.
All right. Agenda setting. Ms. McCone? Anyone?
Yep, my hand's up.
Well, I'm kind of going to go down the line, but Ms. Snyder, you got your hand...
You want something? Did you call my name?
Do you have any comments?
All right, Ms. Snyder.
I'd like to add a discussion of the plaque for Cheryl. That was brought up during council term.
I think that should go to Parks because it's their property.
We have to approve. Am I right? No, I think...
All right. We can talk about it, but it's...I think you're right. All right.
We'll second it.
You get a second? All right. Anybody else have any agenda items? Okay. City council comments. Ms. McClain?
Ah. None.
Ms. Myers?
Huh? I'm exhausted.
Oh, yeah, Nitty Gritty was...I did go to the concert the other night, and packed house. It was a beautiful night, great show. Everybody just had a blast. It really was a lot of fun, lot of fun. Great time in Eureka, as always. I have a lot of fun here. You can too.
All right. I got to add to that.
The reason we didn't have a P.A. on the stage at our workshop was because the guy was in our area to be set up for Nitty Gritty. And so when the folks from the committee were speaking into the microphone, we couldn't, I couldn't hear a word they were saying. I could hear the applause from the audience, but I couldn't hear a word they were saying. And, you know, I found it rather frustrating for a workshop without actually having a two-way conversation.
No.
And no worksheets.
Okay, Ms. Snyder?
Nope.
Ms. Green?
Hey, I agree with Terry. It's fun in Eureka.
Ms. Thomas?
Yeah, I'd just like to say about the packed house. I was selling tickets, and when I left, about 15 minutes into the concert, there was one seat available in the balcony and one seat available downstairs. That's how packed it was.
That's good.
Sell a lot of candy?
Me? I don't sell candy. I sell tickets. Please!
All right. I do want to thank everyone who came out for the entertainment committee meeting last Thursday, and I'm sure we will definitely have another public hearing and public meeting to discuss that, along with some other deals. But it's nice to be able to have some positive discussion in the community. As far as upcoming events, we have on the 10th through the 14th, the 20th Kawasaki VROC Rally. That's going to be all over our little community. And on the 13th, Alt. At the Odd. I think it will be the last one for the season.
What's at the odd?
The Alt. At the Odd. It's alternative music down in the basement.
I'll tell you what that sounds like.
For the millennials and the other group.
Yeah.
Jeff's been doing a great job with promoting that. That's on the 13th from 8:00 to 11:00. On the 14th, we'll have the Second Saturday Gallery Stroll in downtown galleries. On the 16th is the Mexican Independence Day from 5:00 to 7:00 in Basin Park. On the 20th through the 22nd, we'll have the Slingshot and the Ozarks Rally. And then on the 20th will be the parade at 7:00 P.M., starting at the end of the Ozarks and then back down to downtown. And then on the 21st, we'll have Music in the Park called Front Country from 5:00 to 7:00 in Basin Park. And that concludes our meeting. And if you get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. You'd better say aye. All right. We're done.